Thank you, Lord, please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Jacob, will you call the roll, please?
Yes. Butler?
Here.
Jordan. Hopebridge?
I'm here.
Smith?
Here.
Thomas?
Here.
Brash?
Here.
And Sensatz?
Here.
Six members present and absent.
I did get a call from Councilman Jordan earlier today evening. She's been under the weather, thought she'd be better for tonight's meeting, but she contacted me at the last minute and she just felt it was better for her to stay home and not transmit any kind of illness to anybody else, so that's why she saw you there tonight.
Would you be in touch with her, sir?
I talked to her this evening.
Well, just wish her our best.
Yeah.
For recovery, please.
Pardon?
If you should communicate with her, just wish her our best.
Oh, sure, well, yeah, I would definitely do that. Okay, does anyone did not receive their copy of the minutes from the eighteenth meeting? Okay, does anyone have any questions or any issues they want to discuss with us? Was this emailed to us previously or after?
It was emailed Thursday morning and Monday morning.
Okay, if anyone has any questions, we'll entertain a motion. You accept the minutes from the eighteenth meeting. Councilmember Bummer, you're being second. Mr. Fresh, now take a roll call vote.
Butler?
Yes.
Hopebridge?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Brash? And Sensatz?
Yes.
Motion carried.
The minutes have been approved. Okay, before we start the rest of the meeting, I do want to make a personal comment, and it's also a pat on the back. I want to personally thank every city employee, every department, everybody in the administration and the offices, everybody that went out of their way the last four days to deal with the ice storm and the hazards and the outages and the problems that we've had. I think every city employee went out of their way, they put in hours, just unbelievable. Some of them worked with just two or three hours of sleep a day, and I do know I talked to some of the people, they were out till sometimes two, three o'clock in the morning. So, I think, and this is everybody, this is from top to bottom, every department, street electric, water, sewage, police, fire, the service director was out in all hours of the night, the rec center, everybody did everything they could to make this as survivable as possible. So, I personally want to thank all of them publicly and say you guys did one heck of a job, and we're lucky to have that kind of people that work for us.
I would say Mr. Greenwood sent me a text at 4:00 a.m. Friday night, and he said, "Do you know how cold it is at 4:00 a.m.?" And he had a picture of his stash. I said, "Five degrees," he goes, "No, I was driving five, it's three." But he was out with them at that time. Unbelievable.
Okay, we have a new one on the agenda to speak tonight, so we'll go straight to correspondence. We have received a correspondence from St. Mary's School in reference to their fundraiser for next year. A copy of that letter was sent out to everyone. Does anyone have any questions on it or anything they want to talk about or discuss that letter? I do believe it only requires a vote from council if we approve it. They obviously would like to have it approved soon as possible so that they can take a lot of time to prepare it and make sure that they're set up. As it stated in there, it did require a portion of Hutcheson Drive to be closed from the gazebo up to behind St. Mary's Church. I did talk to both the fire chief and the police chief if that was going to create any issues, any problems for them, and they said there would be no problems. Fire Department says as long as they're aware that it's going to be shut down, they can adjust their responses, not an issue. And the police chief stated that it would be no problem for them to also assist in any way they could. So, it's up to council if they want to discuss it or if they want to decide to give the St. Mary's permission at this time. Anybody have any comments? Mike?
Yeah, they do this every year, right? We approve this.
The last one we, the last ones to ban was in 2013.
The last two have been canceled.
Yeah, 2020 was canceled because of COVID, and 2021 was canceled because of COVID. So, they're trying to get a head start on this, hoping that things you want to change and they'll be able to do this, but it has been done before, and it created no issues or any problem. Anybody else have any questions or any comments?
So, I'm in favor.
Okay, all we take is votes. Is anyone want to make a motion to vote on the?
I'll vote for a motion.
Second?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
We'll take a vote on that, just the?
Butler?
Yes.
Hopebridge?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Brash?
Yes.
And Sensatz?
Yes.
Members in favor.
Okay, we will notify St. Mary's that they have been given permission by council to conduct their fundraiser in within May, so gives them plenty of time. Okay, also under correspondence, not on the agenda, just aware of it, Butler received a correspondence that she wanted to read to council and address. And Tara, do you have something?
Yes, I had a resident reach out to me after the weekend. He's here tonight. It's Mr. Marchlinsky, and he has a letter that he would like for me to read. "As we all know, thousands upon thousands were affected by the ice storm that came through Thursday evening. Fifty thousand customers in Belmont County, including the majority of St. Clarisville residents, were without power. After a few hours of realizing that the power was not going to come back on that evening, many started to wonder how they were going to stay warm, keep their pets warm, and protect their home from damage, i.e. water line breaks, et cetera. I was able to call the 911 Operations Center to find out where warming stations were in and around St. Clarisville, and at that time, I was told the Calvary Presbyterian Church what is what was the closest warming station. However, when I arrived at the warming station at 8:30 p.m. on Friday, I had found out that the warming station was closed. Calvary Presbyterian Church was locked up and nobody around. I was able to take one of our elderly residents to the rec center. The rec center was never set up or expected to be a warming station, but Eric and Deb stepped up and made it happen and provided a service that was invaluable to our residents. Over the course of the next 48 hours, I brought many people to the rec center to ensure that they would not freeze to death. Each one was welcomed with open arms, smiles on people's faces, and offered warm beverages and food. The rec center even allowed residents to bring their pets in. So, before we go any further, I want to make sure that these individuals are recognized for a job well done. On behalf of myself, my family, and the residents, taken care of by Eric and Deb, we thank you. My grandfather told me when I was growing up that mistakes were not really mistakes if you learn from them. Hindsight is 20/20. As a retired firefighter, paramedic from a very urban area, I was quite surprised to find out that there was no pre-planned for disaster or emergency where there was no power. No power equals no heat. Apparently, no power equals no water either. Over the 25 years in public service, I was spoiled with pre-plans and plans that had pre-plans and five backup plans in case all the other plans failed. I was very surprised to find out that we had no plans. We had nothing set up as a disaster relief center. We had no concrete procedure to enact and call upon to keep people from dying. So, I have a few ideas that we can use in the future to ensure the survival of every person affected by such an emergency. Knowing our city's very tight budget and knowing that the residents are often not in favor of tax hikes, levies, I put together a few ideas for council and city leaders to look at and figure out what's the best solution for our great city. For simplicity, I'm going to list them in numerical order. One, in case of emergency where power is out and sub-freezing temperatures, I found a lot of elderly residents did not want to leave their home and not know how they were going to get back home or when they would be able to return home. My solution for this is both cheap and readily available, school buses. School buses can seat up to 48 people. In the grand scheme of things, using school buses as a warming station is economically sound and very effective. Placing a school bus outside of our retirement homes, nursing home facilities, and one in each subdivision neighborhood in our city will allow for our resident to survive. Please keep in mind that this is about survival, not comfort. Number two, Belmont County is considered Appalachia. Like it or not, it's just the way it is. This alone opens up many grants and programs to help us protect our citizens. I have attached a few grant applications with this letter for council and city officials to look over and decide what's best for our city. When it comes to warming, I'm sorry, number three, when it comes to warming centers, we need to plant the seed to begin designating a permanent warming center for our community. In many cities and areas, it can be rather difficult to find a building that can be retrofit to operate under conditions of no electricity or heat. St. Clarisville is extremely lucky to have more than half of this battle already taken care of. Pastor Tom at Thoburn United Methodist Church, located at 209 East Main Street, has offered to be said warming center, emergency center for our community. He also has volunteers that are willing to be available on short order. Two men said warming center, emergency center. Their building is ADA compliant with an elevator, they have ample parking, and a large enough facility that is approximately 16 years old that is easily able to retrofit for the needs of our city. There are a few small details that will need to be worked out with council and city leaders so that church can be accessed from side alley that does not have a hill coming in or out of the parking lot and is on ground level, just a few short steps away from the back door. That is something that we can go into further another time. Number four, another thing I found is that potentially catastrophic is our lack of oxygen tanks, emergency generators, and any kind of command center for the citizens of St. Clarisville. I have found in the past that large companies that have retail stores and corporate offices in said city are usually very generous when it comes to supporting their community. Companies like Gulfport, Patterson UTI, Columbia Gas, AEP Ohio, Lowe's Improvement Store, Rural King, Whiteside GM, Thomas Dodge, and many others use donations to the city as a tax write-off. Oxygen tanks, emergency generators for residents who cannot leave their homes but rely on health equipment, heat for survival, and many, many other things are often donated by companies to help their community. I'm not sure if we have a city solicitor, but if we do, I would encourage that they look into this sooner rather than later. Number five, a volunteer committee. If council sees fit, I'm offering my services as a volunteer with no pay, no perks, and with no ulterior motive. I only want to make sure that we're able to provide all of our residents with the security of knowing when catastrophe strikes, we are prepared to help them. I was unable to sleep from Thursday night through Sunday night because I was so worried that someone was going to freeze to death. I'm from a big city, I spent 25 years in public servant, I've seen the worst outcome from incidents less widespread than what we've dealt with this past weekend, and I will do whatever I can and whatever it takes to make sure we're prepared to keep our citizens safe. Number six, Sunday morning, I received a phone call at 9:30 a.m. that the rec center was closing. Again, I want to make sure, I reiterate that Eric and Deb went above their call of duty for 72 hours. Without them, people literally may have passed away. At 10 o'clock, I arrived at the rec center to take the remaining three citizens from the rec center to destinations unknown. All of the warming centers in the area were all scheduled to close at 9:00 p.m. or earlier. I called 911 Center and asked if there was any resources or anywhere I could take the citizens to stay warm until their power was restored. Unfortunately, after the 911 Center called several places, including the French Church for a hotel voucher, which was denied because they're not transients, their words, not mine, I was told that there was nowhere for them to go. With nowhere else for them to go, I took these people to a hotel in town and paid for them to have a room and the peace of mind knowing that they weren't going to be cold that night and got them a room on my dime. Pastor Tom from the aforementioned Methodist Church went and secured the room for the next two days. However, this should not have been how we had to be, how this had to be handled. We didn't have a plan, we didn't know when to close the rec center, we didn't have the manpower to continue staffing the warming center. After speaking with Eric Gay last night and the interim of getting a permanent warming centers, emergency center, we need to have a better plan. I know of several trustworthy people who have stepped up and volunteered to be available in short order to staff the rec center so that Deb and Eric can have a break in the event of another emergency. I will be working with Eric Gay in the very near future to get a list of volunteers, but we need to do better. Our city leaders, council members, our emergency services, and Belmont County Emergency Management Agency need to get a pre-plan for the many different incidents, disasters, and emergencies that can happen at any time in our city. I encourage each one of you to make this a priority to protect the lives of every person inside and outside of St. Clarisville city limits. I am again volunteering my services as a consultant to help anybody organize pre-plan. Thanks for all you do, Sean Marchlinsky, and his cell phone number is here.
Mr. Marchlinsky, I cannot thank you enough. I saw the people you brought in. We had somebody come in that was crying and shaking at the same time, and it broke my heart. This man, literally, and Deb and Eric saved the lives, there's no doubt about it. This guy's a hero. This is his wife, I'm sorry, please stand up, ma'am. But he is willing to help us, and he's right, we kind of got caught because this was a storm, one in a 25-year storm, but unfortunately, we had to deal with it, and we all pitched in hard, but we didn't necessarily always work smart. We worked very hard, but with some of the actual human stories we had, we do need to work smart, and I would be honored if you would help us. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'd like to thank you also for your comments, your initiative, and Tara asked that your letter be put into the minutes, we would all like a copy of it. I was kind of surprised that one of you sent us closed at nine, when it starts to get colder. I don't know, that was just my thought when I heard about that. So, yeah, you're right, something he's done about that. As far as a master plan, the previous administration, we had, we were always asking for one, and for some reason, never got done, so hopefully, we can, we can get this done now.
We're in.
We need a master plan, you're exactly right, but we talked about it, so thank you.
And I'm going to ask Jeremy to explain real quickly, the reason the warming center at Calvary closed, they didn't have the manpower. The lady that took care of it, Heather Gordon, did it completely on her own, on her own dime, and went up and stayed as long as she could, but it's not, we at the rec center and there are not official warming centers, there are certain criteria that need to be met, right?
Yeah, the EMA has guidelines with stuff, but when I was running with the fire department, we were set up down in Barton as one. We don't have shower facilities, even though we have shower facilities, the facilities there don't work, which is part of, part of the budget coming up to get that renovated in there, but that's just a way. We, we made this a warming center based off of what we had and the need.
I think the money's budgeted for the rec center bathroom.
Yes.
And I myself, in person, would like to thank you for opening our eyes, because emergencies just don't happen in the wintertime. We can have a tornado, we can have any kind of disaster, and really opened my eyes, so I thank you.
Tara, do you have any others?
No, he, I'm sorry, Beth, go ahead.
No, 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 I just wanted to make sure he saw after you.
He was, he has a plethora of information to share for applying for grants and different things. I can pass all of that along to you, or his contact information is there. I'm sure that we can all work together to get ideas going and different place, everybody has different people that they know, so different sources and contacts, we can start getting in touch with them, and, you know, anything that we get built or in place, God forbid this happen again, that we have that we didn't have last time, is better than right back to where we were. Even though we did fantastic, I'm not, not shortchanging anyone, it was just so catastrophic, we didn't have enough, we didn't, everyone was maxed.
We needed a plan, yes.
Yeah, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted also everyone thanks for, I mean, it's easy to complain and then to just offer up suggestions instead of just complaining, right? And I didn't hear that as a complaint at all, so I heard this as an offer, as an invitation, and really as something to make us aware of, right? And so, I appreciate, and I think, go on to, we, let's plan and never need it, then need it and not have it, you know, and it's not just a winter thing, it could easily happen in summer. And it's one thing to be inconvenienced when the power goes out, like, I can't watch Netflix, and then it's a whole other thing, when it really is about survival. It's one thing for the lights to go up, for the electricity to go up for an hour, but then put those sub-zero temperatures in there, and people really are cold and they could die, I mean, that's a whole different ballgame, right? And that's what you're learning this to, both of you guys, and I appreciate that, and thank you for doing.
I mean, that point on again, Tara, I said there were 90-year-olds on the third floor that couldn't get downstairs because the elevators weren't working, and he was checking body tests, and they were in the low 90s, like, they, they weren't going to make, you know, despite them arguing with us, they weren't going to make it all night, you know, in a 40-degree apartment, and so.
So, thank you. And, uh, Catherine, shame on us if we don't do something, right?
That's exactly right.
You know, I mean, you know, we've got a volunteer, right? We've got other people, I know I talked to Jeremy, and I'm like, what do you need? You know, I mean, so, you know, make some, I mean, you've got able-bodied council people too.
And I know I'm not supposed to speak, but Pastor Tom at Thoburn.
I'm acknowledging you.
Okay, but Pastor Tom at Thoburn, when we talked to him, he said, in his career moving around parish churches, he has started two or three warming centers from the ground up. So, he, so we have the, the man right there that's done this before, he did it in Holmes County, and he said they don't have cell phones, they don't have anything up there, but they, he started one there, and he started one, I forget, at Brenner, Youngstown, somewhere area, but so he's literally from the ground up, you know, started them and got them running and then left and then moved communities. So, we have a, you know, a huge resource in him, and he's, you know, he's willing and able to, you know, do what he can, volunteer his building, his people, so.
I'd like to set up a meeting with yourself, sir, and your wife. I know Tara told me she'd be interested in helping. We'll get Eric, the fire department chief, Arbins, and let's have a brains trust meeting.
Just want to make one thing, you're, you're.
Yes, sir.
I'm, I'm in no way condemning anybody, everybody.
Oh, I agree.
Go to their butt off to make sure that people are saying.
We got our hearts in the right place.
I just asked you.
We, we just need to make sure that we work more efficiently and people know who to call.
Thank you.
We have a duty to come in for people to call under certain things.
You're exactly right.
Or even those text messages, like, we're on a bit of a right track with Code Red, right? Like, the texts that I got that, "Do this, don't do that, hey, this happened." But Catherine, I'm also volunteer, like, if there's anything I can do, right? Tara, go ahead.
Anything else, J.C., Mark?
No, we all concur, thank you very much.
Yep.
And I will also say thank you for what you've done in the past few days, and thank you very much for being willing to step forward and assist us. It's awfully easy to lock the barn after the horse is gone, but we need to be, again, proactive. But last, last of all, we had a situation that could have been an issue, we had a tornado touch ground, six, five, or six miles north of town. So, again, like, like Mike said, it could be a tornado, it could be a tornado, anything, so we've been at the same situation in the middle of summer, so thank you for your help and thank you through Robert.
Will you make sure I've got your phone number before you leave?
Catherine, it's on that, I have it, though, too.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'll send it to you, and it's on the letter as well.
Thank you. If you don't mind, I'm going to excuse myself to go to the board. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you for listening. I appreciate it, everyone.
You're welcome. Okay, we'll move on at this point in time to the American group.
That's a tough act to follow, let me tell you. Thank you, Tara, for reading that, because it's real important we hear. My report is going to center a lot about what happened this weekend. I got a lot of people to thank. I also want everybody to remember, it is National Heart Month, and we've had people out shoveling. Please be careful if you can, I mean, I'd like to get a list of kids together, also, who will go out and shovel snow. I know Mark shoveled out how many driveways. You probably shouldn't be doing that either.
I agree with you, but until someone else does it, they're older than me, so I'm going to do them.
But I'm just saying, you know, think about that, be careful, because I know all the ER stack up on all the heart attack meds and everything when a snow hits, because they know it's going to happen, so please be aware. And we've all heard the saying, "It's not nice to fool Mother Nature," but I'll tell you what, she really pounded us this weekend, and you'd have to be living under a rock not to know she threw about everything she had at us and then some. The rain, sleet, freezing rain, and temperatures set the stage on Thursday for pounding so severe that I understand we made terror national news for that storm. I don't know if anybody else saw it. I did not, because they had no power, but we were on the national news. The electric lines started falling when the ice took out the power lines as well as the trees. The power went off Thursday about 6:30, didn't come on in many cases till yesterday, but even as the winter bellowed, our town rallied. Our police chief, Matt Arbins, as well as chief, as well as chief Tim Hall of Cumberland Trail, had their guys going door to door, the police went door to door with the firemen at several of the apartment complexes in town to evacuate many of our vulnerable citizens. And people had temperatures hovering in the 50s when they were brought to the St. Clarisville rec center, which was hastily transformed into a warming center. And again, the rec center's not an official warming center, but part of the problem with the official ones in Flushing and Bethesda and Belair, nobody could get to them, the roads were too bad, so we've got to rethink this. The roads were too bad for people to get to the EMA designated shelters, and there's a list of people and places that I need to offer thanks and gratitude for, for their extraordinary commitment and hard work in getting through this weather. First and foremost, to our municipal street crew, water crew, especially electric crew, police force, fire department, they all pitched in and worked pretty much nonstop to get the electric back. Don Smithberger and Jeremy Greenwood were wonderful leaders, they were right there beside them working. They all worked all weekend side by side to get us up and running. And again, extraordinary man of our, men of our fire and police departments mobilized the guys, and they got people out of very dangerous situations, transported them to the rec center. Eric Gay, our rec center director, Debbie Green, and the program director, and Eric Timko, the rec assistant, reached out to Dave Ivan, the Emergency Management Association. They brought cloths, pillows, blankets for the overnight guests. Debbie and Eric stayed at the rec center for two nights so they could be of service, and there were a lot of doggies in there, which I said, "That is fine," because I know if somebody said, "I'm going to get you out, leave your dog here," I wouldn't go. So, they went over and above. Thank you to Ted Showalter from Whiteside Cadillac Chevrolet. They very graciously donated $1,000 to help us feed all the people down there. Chick-fil-A's manager, Stacy Austin, donated not only sandwiches, but trays of chicken strips, and which fed our busy crews and our guests, and that was the first warm meal a lot of people had in over a day. Heather Gordon at Calvary Presbyterian Church had their fellowship hall opened immediately, and out of her pocket, she went and bought stuff to make hot chicken soup and chili sandwiches, and because, again, it wasn't an official warming center, she was there as late as she could, and she was following ever she was tired. I personally spent close to $500 on my debit card running and buying toilet paper, paper towels, drinks, everything the rec center asked me to go get. I was through Sam's and Walmart, I can't tell you how many times. Audrey Brailer at Jacina's Gelato got us chili, then she brought us hot coffee and hot chocolate for our crews and rec center guests on Saturday. And again, first hot food, many people, me included, had had in over a day. Dennis Kasprowski in Respecs told Officer Greg Clark, "Go get a buggy, get what you need, and it's on us." And I have a feeling he may have paid for it out of his pocket, I'm not sure, but he was like stepping up to the plate immediately. He also donated, what, 25?
Fifteen.
Fifteen meals for our linemen to come in on Saturday to eat, because they worked and worked and worked. Top-notch cleaners who came in today and brought us free, they were so impressed with what our rec center did, they said, "We want to offer our services for free and deep clean the rec center." We had a couple people, a man fell, he threw up everywhere, and again, we had dogs having accidents, but those guys handled it like troopers. Jim Gregg and his wife Tamara, who are instructors for yoga, were at the rec center most of Saturday helping to serve people. He and his son Seth showed up Sunday, as did I, to help disassemble cloths, chairs, and tables. They also brought a television, so we could watch TV, and I'm going to recommend we have a TV down there and get direct TV so we can see what's going on and know the weather. I want to thank Councilwoman Tara Butler and Councilwoman Mark Thomas for being on the phone most of Saturday and Friday, coordinating information to our citizens, and I'm going to talk to Anita about if Jeremy and I can get. I'm gonna talk to Anita about if Jeremy and I can get on the Code Red number, so we can say, you know, Greenwood should be on, or, no, you're Greenwood, not Street, who's on first? But this Street should come on in a half hour, we're working on this one. Because I can bet I hit two to three hundred phone calls over the weekend trying to give people information, and it does need to be a central coordination. Thank you very much to Jim Beal. He went with me on Saturday, took a ride filming the lines down, the trees down, to let us know where the city had problems, and he helped coordinate information to our citizens via Facebook. I called Jim probably ten times Saturday, said, put this on, can you put this on? That was very helpful. And I'm gonna make a request to every citizen. When you see one of our white trucks with the city logo on it, if you can safely, please say thanks to a worker and let them know you appreciate their hard work. I've never seen anything like this. I am just so humbled and so grateful to our wonderful people and employees in the city. We are truly a family. And thank you to everyone who helped poor city through this. Thank you to our citizens for their patience and understanding through this time, and God bless you all. I really appreciate it. In other business, though, I mean, that was a very emotional, because I was there and I saw what all went on, but I want you to know, I did reach out to the governor's office today, I spoke to three people in Bill Johnson's office to get us on the list, to get FEMA money, and Jen in the office, she was looking under FEMA grants today, she said, you know, we might even be able to rehab that building across from the rec center, maybe FEMA would pay for it. They have a lot of government constrictions and rules about how it has to be, but if we could get money to do that, I'm in. I'd like to see us get generators, so we can take them to places. I offered, at one o'clock in the morning, Mike Wheeler and Andy Clots, on Saturday, they called me and said, Mayor, we have an idea. Because I had three people down the Harvey Goodman Apartments, three older ladies would not leave. One said, I'm worried about the pipes. I said, screw the pipes, it's not your worry. I want you, I, come to my house, I even cleaned toilets and changed sheets, to bring people to my house, because my power was back on, they would not leave. The police officer, Clots, called and said, I got an idea. They took the battery packs from the police station that will jump a car, and they came over at 1:00 A.M. and got my space heater to try to get some of these people heat. It wasn't enough to power a heater, but we've gotta get some good ideas in play. And this guy has just been an angel sent to us. So I'm sorry I talked a lot, but it has been an emotional weekend, but it has been such a gratitude-filled weekend, the way our people stepped up to the plate. I'm very proud.
Excellent.
I mean, thank you for that report, and all I'll just say is, you know, leadership, 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 right?
Well, I mean-
So, I'm just gonna say, right, you're the mayor, you're the chief executive.
I am.
And so you should be commended also.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other comments?
I just wanna add that the mayor mentioned that we made national news. My wife had spoke to somebody in Evansville, Indiana, and she seen Belmont County on the news there that we were the hardest to count. So, it's definitely a disaster we had, so...
Mark?
Mayor, thank you. She, she did incredible work. We talked a lot, we saw each other a lot. She was leading and had a lot of people following her lead by example. Also, want to acknowledge Jeremy. He and I spoke and saw each other way too much over the weekend. But, you know, obviously, our crew, that's already been mentioned, and hopefully, maybe at the next meeting, I told the mayor, maybe we bring them in, so that we can thank all of them. But Jeremy, you know, passing on from all of us, the deep appreciation, even up till last night at nine o'clock down on Overlook Court. One of the last things, a couple of poles down, right near my home, I saw the lights when I was coming home, and we ended up having a few others show up, Councilman Sinzo, Councilman Smith, to see these guys, nine o'clock, Sunday night, trying to wrap it up. So it was incredible, incredibly wonderful to see everybody come together. Jeremy, thank you. Mayor, thank you. Thank you to all the council members that did their part, too. I'm very grateful.
Thank you very much. And I don't think, in this case, that we can actually say thank you to these people enough. If we sat here till tomorrow morning and said thank you, it probably wouldn't be enough. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I mean, since we are on the subject, and maybe we can help out here with this citizen, but I got a text today, and I responded to her with the phone call, but she was saying that realizing that this power outage was a rare occurrence here in town, I'd still like to talk to you about improving the city's response with communication to the residents. I had hoped for some updates on the city website or messages sent via text. Text messages have been previously used for missing elderly and oil-water alerts. So, I'm just wondering if there's something that we can get out to the public who are, might not be aware of Code Red or updates that we get?
Try to get everybody onto the Code Red system as they sign up with the utilities and things, but normally, we do try to get some of the stuff on the website. The problem was, the couple of people that do it-
Power, people lost their phones.
Didn't have their phones, didn't have power, and didn't have anything. And then some of it was totally out of our hands, that we didn't have an update that we could give, even an estimate, because as soon as you give an estimate, if you don't meet that, you're in trouble. So, a lot of it was just, but I agree, it needs to be looked at, and I've already talked to the crews about having a post-incident, you know, pow-wow, and get through all this, but-
Anita, maybe Jeremy and I could get on that Code Red that we could update, but, oh, you don't want to, I mean, I would be-
Ah, Jeremy.
I mean, we could, we could send, you know, Gay would should be back on in twenty minutes, or whatever, I don't know, but I understand what people were saying, they were frustrated. But it was such a perfect storm of bad, that, again, the firemen and the police were knocking door-to-door on all the apartments, incredible. But you're right, we gotta work smarter.
And again, she understood, she expressed her gratitude to all the city workers, but she would just like to know a better way or more information on getting information.
Don, I'd like you to help, too, because of what you know about skating construction, maybe you could help them.
Definitely.
I mean, anybody that wants to, please.
Right. Mark?
With regard to contact, is this, does this building have a generator?
Yes, it does.
Okay, so we had everything to wear?
We didn't have anybody-
We didn't have phone, air internet, and most of the staff was not in-
Well, no, no, I'm just thinking about us, maybe how we could help. I was thinking, I was talking to a few individually about some way that council could be notified, so that council could then go out and tell their constituents what's going on. And I don't know what the answer to that is.
I don't either.
I don't know what it is, but so we kinda knew-
Brainstorm.
With the incident command system, it's usually instituted, and that was part of the fire department training and things, and all that, you usually have a different commander for that and go through, and you have one person that does that, and then they are the in-charge, they're the media relations, they're the ones that disseminate the information to whoever. Because the worst thing that can happen is, like I said, we disseminate information that says, you're gonna have your power back on in ten minutes, and then fifteen minutes later, it's still not on, because, let's just say, our digger truck blew a hydraulic hose.
Hypothetically, yeah.
Hypothetically. Or, you know, the line that we just put up gets fried again, because the tree branch fell that wasn't there five minutes ago. It's just, so, I mean, there's things in place, set with that. That was part of the NIMs training, that I said I wanted to start going with the staff and go through it. It's just trying to get it all concentrated and actually do it.
Okay.
But we could work the fire department with their commander who does it, yeah. And I mean, if they-
Well, I mean, and that's part of it, though, too, and even some of the stuff he was saying, that's already set up in place with the EMA, with the EMA. The problem was, this is a county-wide disaster, statewide disaster, it takes on a life of its own with some of the stuff. Some of the resources that we could have called in, even with our electric department with mutual aid, we're going through the same issues. Woodsfield, Columbus, you know, it's, there's stuff set up, it's just this one was a little bit bigger than most anticipated. So, sorry, I'm tired.
Yeah. I just want a quick thing, I agree with everybody, there just needs to be communication. Have people texting me, calling me, and I text Jeremy, and he's busy, you know, can't be texting everybody, so, I don't think we need to tell people when their power will be on, but we need to at least, this has to be something, we can discuss it another time, but-
Yeah, and to Mark's point, you know, like, truly, if I'm here in town in Abel, like, Saturday, and again, I did the same thing, I get a call, I text Jeremy, Jeremy, we're back on. Oh, I don't know, I've just been sitting here doing nothing, you know what I mean? So, but, and I'm like, well, if you need something, let me know, but if there's some kind of coordinated system that if you really, you know, I can shovel, you know, take a smoke break every once in a while, you know, for the heart.
Well, we could-
But I mean, just, you know, I think as we plan ahead, you know what I mean?
Yeah. Now, I mean, there's some things that I can't have other people doing, like, you know, the electric guys, my street department guys were saying, why didn't you call us this weekend? I said, because you're my backup plan if there's one of those things that I don't speak of that happens. You have to kinda just plan strategically and go through it. I was a gopher, I was helping the electric, but I wasn't climbing poles. These guys were climbing poles, that's what they're trained to do, that's what they did. So there's some things that we can have people come in and look through and help and volunteer with, but with liability purposes, there's some things that we can't do.
Listen, I'm not offering to climb a pole, right? I'm just saying that I think we're all willing to do our part.
Yes.
So...
But, yeah, like Eric and Debbie, they were exhausted, and if we didn't have, and I'm sorry, we didn't have a coordinated system, they had volunteers spell them off, although they couldn't go home, because they had no power, but they were working all night and all day. So, yeah, we need to have the volunteer list. We had, again, that Jim and his wife Tamara came over, and they set up an assembly line with food to get people hot meals. So, it was very well done, but it could be done smarter.
Okay. Thank you. We'll move on to our service director's report, starting with, as I said already.
Uh, yeah. Upcoming projects, department budgets, I'm skipping a lot, because I don't care at this point. We've got some potential oil and gas leases that's coming up, so we'll have to deal with those, we'll get through that. Departments, the electric department, obviously, ice and snow, but we are a man short, we did have a man resign a couple weeks ago, so that was part of the reason why I was out helping. We are advertising for that open position. We've gone through the department advertising, and then the rest of the city advertising, and we will be advertising in the paper and a couple other sources, starting, I think, next week. Water, wastewater, that thing that we don't speak of, we have seven of them up to this year. We also, the mayor signed the paperwork for the five-million-dollar grant, so that's being processed. Hopefully, that we'll start to see that in a little bit. We're still working with our engineer towards that. Street department, so far this year, we've used about three hundred and fifty tons of salt, we have about a hundred and fifty on hand, and we just ordered a hundred and eighty today. That will complete our order that we had for the entire year. Doesn't mean we can't get more, it just means that that's what we were obligated to, to get at least ninety percent of that, and we're gonna get all of it. Rec center, same thing, we opened that up to the public, to the public, or the power outages, and I thank them guys for that. Police, I have Matt's report, because he was in training today, and then he was not feeling good, so I told him not to even come in. We hired a new officer to replace another officer who's going down to part-time. He'll be starting next week, I'll have more information next meeting. Good to the city, I had no one out, no one out sick, but hopefully, Matt is gonna start feeling better. He called me on his way back from the training, saying he's not good. Wanna send thanks out to the street department. Obviously, they were out constantly Thursday and Friday, the streets were in awesome shape compared to a lot of the other areas. Was out and about in a little bit, obviously, this weekend, and saw some horrible areas. Our streets were pretty good while we were out, when I was out with the electric crew and the other guys, there was no areas that we couldn't access. So, I mean, there was a couple that got some, a little slippery, because the snow started to melt, and then froze again, but were good. They were also, as I mentioned, my backup crew for if anything else happened in the city while the electric crew was out doing it. My electric guys, all weekend long, those guys are beasts. Some of you know, we've got one that's been here a long time, and the other two that are in the department are new hires, they're not even at their six-month probation yet. They have been just phenomenal going through. As of right now, a hundred percent of the city should be back on. Some of the services are not in pretty shape, but they are serviceable, they're safe, so there's gonna be a lot of cleanup that we're gonna need to do in the next couple months. Water department, I don't know if anybody knows, but the county actually ran out of water this weekend. Their filling station, their water plant was operational, but their pump stations did not have, I don't know if they didn't have backup generators, or if they just failed, I think it was a little bit of both.
Yeah.
So, we volunteered, and we were a backup filling station for the EMA County for pot of water, if they needed to get water buffaloes anywhere for anybody. Sorry, I'm kinda losing my spot here, because I'm a little tired. They also, the water department also was making fuel runs. Our sewer plant, our water plant, our electric and street department plant were all on generators at one point in time, running backup, going through. When the one generator at the street department ran out, that is actually where our fuel pumps are, so we started to have an issue with that. You can't operate fuel pumps if you don't have power for them. Another issue that we also had with that, too, is the scheduled fuel delivery we had for last week was canceled, so we were starting to run low on fuel. I've got a thank you down in here for another company that came in and actually was able to get us some fuel. Wastewater department, same thing, they kept the plant going, we had several backups sewer throughout the city that they were out and investigated and went through, and they were helping out with the other crews. Police department, they were transporting citizens to rec, and then, obviously, answering their normal calls for snow and ice. Rec center staff, they reopened the center down there, they got transportation for people, were able to get food for people, and they actually were there all night.
Twice.
Yep. I wanna thank the falling businesses, EQT, wanna thank them for the water tanks, when we were doing the temporary water line, that's been sitting down by the recycling bins. We have deemed that those are no longer needed, and they were draining them last week, and I think they were supposed to take them out this week, but with the ice and snow, I don't know. As the mayor mentioned, Respecs and Chick-fil-A both donated food to the cause, Giya sent us a coffee and chili. Top-notch cleaning for volunteering to clean up there, and I also wanna send out to Whitesides for their donation, but also wanna thank John Shepherd, who's a former employee of the city, he has a country family tree service. He was, we hired him to come in, and he was trimming trees, but then, Sunday, when we had our issue with the digger truck, he was also crawling on the truck and underneath the truck and the hydraulic fluid, trying to help us fix that. And then wanna thank Carson Petroleum for their fuel delivery, that was a lifesaver there. Also, it's the first part of the month, so I'm gonna have our new employee of the month. This month, we went duplicate again, we actually got two police officers, it happens to be the two police officers that delivered the baby last month, so. Wanna say congratulations to Kevin Yates and Andy Clots. Kevin's married with four children, he's got two boys and two girls, he's been in law enforcement for fifteen years. Of those fifteen years, he's had eleven of it with the SWAT, the SWAT team. He is also a subject control instructor, which means that, you know, he can grapple and twist your arm back. He is a less lethal instructor, he's also our K-9 unit, he likes to, or he is a K-9 evaluator for the state of Ohio. In his off time, he enjoys his family time, watching movies, training police, other police canines, and learning new aspects of law enforcement. As I said, he was one of the crew that helped deliver the baby, but he is one that has also, in the past, saved several of their lives through reviving them with either Narcan or CPR. Andy is a St. Clairsville native, he's married with one son. He's been in law enforcement for 18 years, been a SWAT operator for 15 years of that, also part of the Belmont County Sheriff's Office dive team. He is our, one of our drone operators right now. He is also a mountain patrol officer for the county, which means he likes to ride horses, and he rides horses for the county. In his off time, he enjoys family time, hunting, fishing outdoors, and then riding motorcycles and horses. So, want to say congratulations to the two, they're not here tonight, but Andy is actually the one that has resigned, his full-time commission is part-time with us now, so. Kind of fitting that he goes out on a high note, I guess. And then the last thing I'll get into is all of our legislation items. We've got 2022-02. The insurance legislation, I need to add, is an emergency because our coverage needs to start before the next meeting. 2022-03 is the final budget, or the permanent budget, I should say. And that needs to be an emergency. That can probably, I think we were thinking two readings, it would be nice if council could vote on that in the next meeting and then have that for there.
Jeremy, is that the budget we just got?
Yes.
Okay, I mean, just, just.
Yes, that's why I'm saying multiple readings, it's got the emergency language in it so that it will take effect as soon as you vote on it. But it can be multiple readings, we're just trying to hurry. 22-04, 2022-04, the ARC grant application. This is for the East End Water Project, this is to allow Anita, Annette, damn it, sorry, to appropriate the grant money that we got for that project and get that so we can start paying the contractor. 22-05 is the I-70 water line loan agreement. Instead of actually depleting all of our cash reserves, talking with EPA, our engineer, and R cap, we figured that it would be best to go after an OWDA loan for the I-70 water line project. That project's gonna be approximately $800,000. We've already paid probably close to $200,000 for the temporary line that's there, so the remaining line will probably be the permanent fix. If we do what we think we're gonna have to do, will be about $800,000. I need to add, is an emergency too, so we can get moving on that. 2022-06, agreement for emergency work on the I-70 line project. This is basically authorizing us, before we didn't go through, because what had happened with the project, EPA mandated us to do it. We were calling around to find contractors, this contractor that we had had access to the piping, so we didn't bid the project out. It wasn't much of an issue while we were paying for it with our cash reserves, but now that we're going for the loan, we need this as legislation to go through council and go through, do that. So, same thing, those two are kind of tied together. And then 22, 2022-07, resolution to change the council meetings. There's, is there an emergency in that one too?
No.
No, okay, we took the emergency out of that one, so that could be multiple. And that's actually it, I'm tired. Sorry.
Do you want questions now, or as we go through these individually?
Or?
I'm sorry?
Do you just want to start going through these, or do you, if I have a question on one of these now, you want to hear it now?
On the, the legislation?
You want to do, probably do the legislation.
Let's wait, yeah.
Yeah, we can go to the other stuff and do the legislation. Okay, any questions or other comments for Jeremy?
Jeremy, is there an update on the Belmont County water? Are they doing work at the?
They are up and running, they've got generators where they need to, but they have a conservation order still in place, and a boil order.
I mean, on our construction.
Oh, which one?
By Porter Fields.
Oh, yes, the pit is in, so hopefully, they're gonna be setting the rest of the equipment, but obviously, with the snowstorm and ice storm, it kind of delayed them on that. So, that was the main holdup, was getting the concrete vault in, which if you're driving by there, you can actually see it's put in place, so. With that also, we also did pump replacement at the existing connection down at the water building. We had that down there, it had been a couple of years since those pumps have been run, so instead of relying on them and waiting for them to crap out, like Murphy's Law always happens, we replaced them as part of the project, we're gonna take the existing pumps, have them refurbished and rebuilt, and have them as backups, sitting there, ready to go, in case something would happen, so. That has happened also. You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Jeremy. We'll move on at this time to the finance director.
You want to hit Matt, I got Matt's report.
Okay.
Sorry. 329 calls, one special operation call, 19 accidents, 49 officer return, 26 arrests, three warrants served, four domestic incidents, 62 traffic stops, and a whole bunch of other stuff. And the sign is down on, what is that, Nola Avenue? We have the other sign has actually come in, the one that was donated funds for, we just haven't had it placed yet, and then, as I mentioned in my report, we have hired another officer to replace the guy that's going to part-time. That's it, sorry.
Okay, now we'll move on to finance.
I gave everyone a copy of the budget with the first reading to be denied, and I do have backup parole line items and everything, I just couldn't get it together. I have finished, I just couldn't get it, the copy is made for everyone tonight, so I'll give those to you tomorrow, and if you have any questions, you can ask me or Jeremy about the project and things like that, so. I'd like to have one reading tonight, and then if we can, possibly pass it to the next council meeting.
So, is the supporting document gonna be in our box, is it the email?
How would you like it?
How many pages is it?
Probably, well, as many funds as there are, I guess, it's several pages. Plus all the, it's broken down by line items, so it is several pages.
I guess I might build electronic images.
Okay.
Do you want to do all of the council like that, make it easy?
That's fine.
Any other questions for Annette?
Oh, I forgot, police too, we bought two used cars. Sorry, there's too many things going on. What we did is we found a company in Chicago that has used police horses, so we were able to get some that have 40,000 and 50,000 miles on them, and they will be replacing two cars that we have 100 and 120,000 miles on. So, we got two for the price, less than the price of one. So, they're actually being, the equipment's being transferred off the old ones and into the new ones. I'll shut up now, sorry.
Okay. We'll now move on to planning and zoning, Mr. Murphy, you have the report.
Yes, just a few things for council. Last week, I did send out an email to the council members in regard to the appointment of two new members to our Stormwater Quality Board. This board oversees the approval of the Stormwater Management Plan submitted for large developments. This board has three members, one must be the street superintendent or landscape and ground superintendent, another is a member of council appointed by the president, and the third is a member of the public, appointed by the mayor to a three-year term. Ideally, the members would have experience and knowledge related to stormwater management. Many of you know Darren, our streets superintendent, he's the only current member right now. As mentioned in the email, the mayor would like to appoint A.J. Smith of Perdantus, formerly Colin Associates here in St. Clairsville. He is a professional engineer with certifications in stormwater management and erosion and sediment control. He's also a member of our planning commission, as I mentioned, he'll be perfect for that, just his knowledge from his expertise, but then also being a member of the planning commission, they can kind of hear some of the same things. And I had attached his resume, and you can see how impressive that is. Mr. Beelis would like to appoint Don Vincenzo as council member on this board. Mr. Vincenzo has been contacted and is willing to serve. He has knowledge of stormwater management due to his responsibilities with Dominion Energy. And those two members, I have more in my report, Bill, or sorry, Jim, but if you want to go ahead with those two appointments, you can now, and then I'll jump back into the other two things.
Okay, we'll have to address those appointments one at a time.
I would like to so moved that we appoint Mr. A.J. Smith, per Tom's recommendation and per his sterling resume, to the Stormwater Management Board.
Okay, the motion has to come from.
From council.
I'm sorry, okay.
Yeah.
I would like to make the recommendation that Mr. Smith be appointed.
And I'll make that motion based upon the mayor's recommendation.
Hey, we have a second, I'll second that.
And we'll take a roll, Paul, vote.
Butler?
Yes.
Hoebridge?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Yes.
Thrasch?
Yes.
Yes.
Paul Carey.
Six and O that, Carey's even appointed. The second one is a member of council has to be added to this board, and my recommendation is that we have one council person, as Tom stated, that has background and knows what he's doing when it comes to this. So, my recommendation would be to appoint Vincenzo. So moved. In a second?
I'll second that.
We need to vote on that.
Butler?
Yes.
Hoebridge?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Thrasch?
Yes.
He should go into that to do as his extension, just for the record.
Yeah.
It should be, anytime you have something like that, you need to abstain, yeah.
So, wait a minute, we have a 5-0.
Especially when you already had five votes, you don't, you don't need to. You have a long week for everybody. Okay, Tom, we want to go to the next.
Yes, thank you, council, thanks, Jim, Catherine. And just by coincidence, maybe not coincidence, but last week, AEP submitted a stormwater management plan for their new transmission line project that will pass through St. Clairsville. This project is also part of the larger Lundie Station, or the new station that AEP is building just north of where their existing station is. So, in the near future, there will be a board meeting. Obviously, I'll get everything sent out related to that project to you, Don, and anyone else. If council members have questions on that, always feel free to contact me. The last thing, Don Smithberger and I have been working with some telecommunication companies that are proposing new fiber that will pass through the city. These are only mainly trunk lines, they're not residential lines, they usually handle larger corporations or companies. Horizon, at the moment, Horizon, not Verizon, but Horizon with an H, is proposing a new fiber overlap on Route 40 in the vicinity of Commons Mall Crossing that will contact eight of our city poles. And I, Don and I, met with a representative of Horizon to review the application information and the proposed path. The next step is council approval, according to our code. So, at a future council meeting, the Horizon representative will be present to ask for final approval. We're just remaining, waiting on some last-minute application materials that they get to us. But Don, he's happy with the path, it's only touching eight of our poles. As our code is set up, council gives approval, there hasn't been an ordinance in the past, it's just a final step by council, so you'll hear our recommendations at that council meeting. But in the meantime, if someone would have questions on it, just contact. And that's it.
Would you be expecting an answer from us that night?
Usually, yes, I mean, Donnie and I have been working with them for quite a while now just to make sure they're submitted, anything that might be needed. Donnie's more than satisfied with what they're proposing. He usually is at the meetings, and I imagine when Horizon representative is here, they will stop it. But they can answer any questions, and if for some reason, council didn't feel comfortable right that day, you don't have to prove that, you could always say, well, let's, I have some questions, we want to ask city staff, and we'll let you know at the next council meeting. But we try to do as much likewise so that you're happy, and like I said, at any point in time, contact us.
Any other questions for Mr. Murphy?
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Okay, we'll now move on to council committees, first is finance, Mr. Smith, you have your report.
The report, finance meets the third Monday of the month. The only thing that I'm aware of at this point is that we discussed the insurance, and we need to pass tonight, you know, it's savings, quite a bit of savings, $45,000 to $50,000 around that area. So, that's 2022-02, and I think we need to pass that tonight, that's all I have.
Mike, I have a question. Mike, with regard to that policy, Ann or Jeremy, the insurable items on there, are we, are we clear as to what items we have? Are there items on there that we shouldn't be insuring?
We think we've cleaned up most of that, but there's still a potential for some stuff.
Okay, that's what I feared.
That's a whole part of the whole thing, even the insurance that we just did last year. I know we just got the Gator for the rec center, it was listed on there specifically twice as the Gator and a side-by-side, and we were charged for both, and I said, oh, that's probably a problem, because I know we only have one. So, there's a couple incidents of stuff like that, we're working through that to make sure, but most of what we have in the list that we develop is accurate as we're gonna get right now.
Okay, as he indicated, every item that's listed affects your insurance premium. And I understand we need to do that tonight, and that's one of only a few I'm okay with because I'm aware of what, what we need to do, and I have some knowledge on it. But at some point, if any one of us need to help anybody, try to discern what we have and what we don't have so we can clean it up even more, if you save $10 or you save $1,000, it's efficient administration, so, thank you.
Jeremy, where does that list that goes in the source come from? It doesn't come from our depreciation schedule, does it?
No.
Okay.
No, it actually came from the list that we went through based off of what was insured from before. We went through the list again, saw the information, said, well, do we have this? Is this still here? And then I worked with the superintendents to make a determination. Nope, that's gone, that's been gone for five years, or this has been gone for a year, or this broke, and we had to replace it, and stuff like that, so we're continually trying to do that.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry. The two police cars that you just mentioned are things that immediately, I assume that.
Yep, they're already on the insurance.
There, the other ones are coming off, or will be off?
As soon as we get all the stuff transferred from them and do the turn-in to get the funding, or trade-in, I should say, we'll get them taken off. But the new ones are already on there until we can get the other ones taken off.
Thank you.
Sorry, Mark raised a good point, so like if I have owned four cars and I take one off, I call my insurance company, does that work the same with this, if we buy or sell? We're supposed to be vehicles, it's not the vehicle, like, you know.
When I talk to both our, the current insurance agent and the new proposed one, it's not that big of a deal with these littler, smaller vehicles. Some of the other stuff that we're looking at getting, that stuff's in the budget, that backyard machine that I would have killed for this past weekend as we were trying to climb, you know, utility poles. That kind of stuff, the stuff, the bigger stuff, the $80,000, $120,000, $300,000 vehicles, that's what's gonna affect the premium more than anything.
So, adjust that during the year, either give us a refund or charge us an additional?
Yep.
Okay. Okay.
Any other questions? Okay. Move on to utilities.
Yeah, we, at our meeting tonight, we discussed a couple different circumstances that were specific to customers. We talked about link with vinyl and additional services policy, which we're still going to get additional language for that. And we were given the utility report, and the next meeting is on March 7th, at 6:45.
Any questions for... If you'll move on to police, have you ever reported to police?
I'm sorry, Mike. I, I, are we starting our meetings earlier because of the new seven o'clock time for council meetings?
We've got a resolution that you guys...
For the council, will you start back to your...
Okay. Sorry.
I don't think you can have a fifteen-minute meeting.
Just something to think about?
Yes, it'll be something that'll need to be addressed.
Okay. Okay, Beth, do you have a...
I do. We had a police committee meeting on January 18th, it started at 8:21. Attending were Catherine, Jeremy, Don, Mike, and J.C. Talked about the law enforcement sharing opportunity that our police department now is part of. We also, the chief confirmed new hire, Mike Wheeler. Speed sign two weeks ago had been ordered, it had been ordered before that, but it is in now, here. We had, we have been accepted for the body camera grant, we haven't gotten that yet, but we have been notified that we've been accepted. The chief and lieutenant went to a training today, all-day training. We're talking about the snow ban and perhaps making some amendments to that. So we're going to look at it in a police committee and then bring it back to the larger committee. Basically, it's, we're wondering if those times should be in there. So that's something that we're going to get in the police committee, but that's something that we did talk about. We will be having a demo of the... We have got, we got a grant, the police department got a grant with, to have a juvenile justice jeopardy game. And we partnered with the Belmont County Juvenile Court and the pilot project of St. Clairsville Schools. So it's an officer who does jeopardy in the classroom, and it's specific questions to Ohio law, Belmont County law in some cases, then this, in this particular case, St. Clairsville Schools, like school rules, consequences, juvenile expulsion records. So we, it just started in the fall, and so we're going to actually have a demo, and we think at the next police committee meeting, but I'll keep everybody informed. The next police committee meeting is on 2/21/22. So we invite anybody who would like to see that demo, that juvenile justice game. We're not going to do the whole hour, I promise, but get a few questions to kind of see what it's like, just want to make sure everybody's aware of that. We also talked about laundry and shower facilities for our police officers, and how could we perhaps make that available in our basement as it is? So we're looking, we, we need to have showers for the police officers. And we should have done that a long time ago, so we're just trying to figure out how we can make that happen.
And the reason, reason being?
Please.
Well, I mean, well, the, my, I mean, you know...
One of the employees of the month who helped deliver the baby went home and was covered in blood, didn't normalize it until we got home.
Well, that's not the only reason.
That's not the only reason, but that is one of the important ones. It's the same thing that's happening in the fire industry. Our first responders and police should not be dragging home these contaminants.
Yeah, we just, we're coming through a pandemic, right? And so that's my point, that should have been there. We all know it should have been there a long time ago, so we're trying to figure out how can we make that. I mean, our police, our police officers aren't complaining about this, I don't mean it that way, but the area that the police have is just really small. And so we need to figure out, there's a lot of things we need to figure, we need to figure out how to make this building ADA compliant for council meetings. And so we're looking at this whole master plan, the police and shower facilities are certainly part of that. So that was just part of the discussion. And it'll be an ongoing discussion because by the next meeting, on 2/21/22, I'm not going to record that there are showers, right? But there need to be showers. And that was what we talked about the last meeting, we adjourned at 8:52. Our next meeting, as I said, is 2/21/22 after the council meeting. That's my report.
Thank you, Beth. Any questions, comments?
I'll have an unpopular comment, but with regard to this building, there's a lot of things that should have been done with it fifty years ago. When you look at retrofitting and ADA and what have you, don't, don't put it out of the question of looking at down the road, a new municipal building, or, or, which I might favor more importantly, is a new public safety building first, and then we make it work. Don't lose that thought, I'm not suggesting it today, tomorrow, or next year, but to efficiently run the city more with public safety than anything else, I don't think that should be out of the question.
Nor do I.
Just for the record.
Yeah, you actually, you can actually get into a point where you try to retrofit something, spend more money than, than it's working.
This building has served the city very well for many years, okay? It's, you know, the way city operates is not the same as it was sixty, seventy, eighty years ago. And it's just something to keep as an open mind. I know there's great cost to it, we have issues as to where it might be able to go, et cetera, et cetera, but that's all something to think about.
I have already pretty much thought this through with it, and to get an addition on here like I do can make, I can make this building ADA compliant, it's just coming up with the funding to do it.
I'm just talking about shower for the police right now.
I understand, which segues into...
But you mentioned ADA and the renovation of the building.
Well, also, don't lose sight of the fact you give them showers, they still do not have, in my opinion...
No.
...the best possible space to adequately do their job. They do an amazing job with an incredibly small, unreasonable space. So if you do nothing else, you retrofit this building to, to where you have an ADA, maybe we look at a, at a small public safety building.
We've kind of discussed that before, within, the problem has always been with the utility office being here, it's kind of nice to actually have officers in the building because the large amount of cash that we usually have, so... But there's, like I said, we can sit down some other time and go through what my idea is. It's going to be, you know, probably two million dollar idea, but we'll find it somewhere.
Public safety can, could include utilities too, though.
Thank you, Beth. Questions, anymore? Okay. Thank you. Move on to Northside Streets, Mr. Vincenzo.
Oh, yeah, as far as a report, not much of a report, but I have asked the committee members, and Terry has given me some alleys and some right ways that we got to be looking at for paving this year. So we will be meeting on that before too awfully long because we definitely want to have something going by the end of February, March for sure. Good report. Thank you.
Any comments, questions?
Goodends, there's a field.
Okay, we'll move on to Streets Southside, Mr. Thresh.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Jeremy for removing the trees that were covering our road on Thursday night. He was on it before I even got around the block, they were gone, so I would like to thank you for that, and the snow removed.
Yeah, like I said, I don't think we can say thank you enough to all of these crews for the work that they did in the last week. Safety, you have anything under safety?
Yep. We had our first meeting on, a guy came in and talked about housekeeping and organization, make our workplace safer, so that's all I don't know.
Okay, any questions for Jeremy on safety? Or I'm sorry for J.C. I'm used to...
Okay. Knocked out of sleep.
Okay, next is Building and Browns, this is not here this evening, planning commission, Mr. Thomas.
No report.
Fire District, Mr. Mrs. Jordan is not here again, we have nothing on that. Recreation, Mr. Thomas.
Yeah, we did meet on January 20th, and there's a number of issues I'm going to, with, so, so as we don't go till midnight tonight, I'll try to be as brief as possible. The couple issues that Eric talked about, number one, he wanted to let us know that he was at, at a conference, I think he's up in Sandusky, at a conference now, coming back tomorrow. And so some of the issues we talked about at the meeting, Eric was talking about he and Jeremy working on the budget, there wasn't any finance report, there was a continued discussion of the restroom upgrades that were briefly mentioned earlier tonight. We spent a lot of time talking about the summer concert series. That summer concert series begins Memorial Day weekend. That will be the first concert series, more to follow, and it will run through September 10th. Last year, we spent thirteen thousand dollars on the 2021 concert series. As of today, for this year, he has sponsor commitments of five thousand dollars, and it's continually looking to any business who may want to sponsor this year. One big change with the concert series is it will be moved from Tuesday nights to Thursday nights. So that, that's important to note. Again, with the idea that there's a couple of nights in Wheeling, that Tuesday, specifically Tuesday and Wednesday, where there are, you know, concerts there, so we'll be doing that. There was a brief discussion about potentially doing not every Friday, but certain Fridays, Acoustic Friday at the gazebo on the bike trail, just something different. Things, again, that he's looking into. There was discussion, and he has had meetings with various members, including our law director, about the possibility of selling alcohol at these Thursday night concerts. The city will not be selling alcohol, but will, will hire, hire someone to come in. There'll be the, the permit, I'll call it a festival permit, that, that an entity would get, would come in and charge admission for beer. His theory was that we are losing a lot of younger people at some of these events because there's no alcohol. That has not been finalized. Like I said, we talked, he did cover the legalities with our law director, and, and so there'll be more coming from there. As far as the rec center, the place is full with all kinds of different events, and their schedule is literally maxed out. So things are going well at the rec center. Eric has great ideas, and he has a lot of enthusiasm, and I want to give him a shout out also, because at the end of the day, at the end of the day on Saturday, when the electric crew was down on Maple Avenue and Debbie Lane, we had two flaggers who really haven't flagged before. Up at Butler and Noel was Eric, who volunteered his time, and of course Jeremy was down at Pex Lane on Route 9 as the guys were cutting the trees, that in effect, at Debbie Lane and Maple Avenue, which in effect then kicked the power on from Noel Avenue North. That last group of people that we were all hearing from, from Jepson, North Sugar, North Market, et cetera. So shout out to Eric, and that's, that's the report.
I'd just like to say I appreciate the ideas and the alcohol, try to up it up a little bit, not just that, but, you know, he sounds like he has some good ideas.
Yeah.
So I appreciate it.
We'll keep you posted.
The, the projected income for the rec is already, what, more than last year, but I mean, with the constant events and nothing going on last year with COVID, so there should be a really good, really good year for them.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, again, park is closed, Councilman Jordan is not here, no report on that. At this time, we'll move on to ordinances and resolutions, to our law director.
Council has six pieces of legislation before tonight, and because there is so much there before you, I think it's probably more expedient to address each one individually, and then take a vote on that one, and then move on to the next. Up for, first one up is Resolution 2022-02, and that's the resolution authorizing and directing the mayor of the city of St. Clairsville to enter into a contract with public entities pool of Ohio, PEP, for necessary insurance coverages and declaring an emergency. And this one is requested to be emergency legislation since we need to renew before beginning of next month.
Okay, at this time, ask the clerk to read the Resolution 2022-02.
Resolution number 2022-02, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor of the city of St. Clairsville to enter into a contract with public entities pool of Ohio for necessary insurance coverages and declaring an emergency.
Again, this has been requested as emergency, does anyone wish to make a motion to address that?
Yeah, Jim. I move that the rules requiring ordinances and resolutions to be read on three separate readings, to be suspended and declaring an emergency.
Do we have a motion, do we have a second? Mr. Thresh. At this time, we'll take a roll call vote to determine whether or not council will consider this emergency legislation.
Butler?
Yes.
Oopridge?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Thresh?
Yes.
Vincenzo?
Yes.
Okay, it's been considered emergency legislation, so at this time, we'll read the resolution again and take a final decision on the resolution itself.
Resolution number 2022-2, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor of the city of St. Clairsville to enter into a contract with public entities pool of Ohio for necessary insurance coverages and declaring an emergency.
Okay, at this time, does someone wish to make a motion to pass this? Wait a second. Okay, Mr. Thresh, do we not take a vote on the motion itself, around the resolution itself?
Butler?
Yes.
Oopridge?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Thresh?
Yes.
Vincenzo?
Yes.
Okay, we have six-oh unanimous vote. Resolution 2022-02 has been passed.
Okay, the second piece of legislation up tonight is 2022-03. This is the budget ordinance. It's an ordinance to make permanent appropriations for the normal expenses and other expenditures of the city of St. Clairsville, state of Ohio, for the period January 1st, 2022, and through December 31st, 2022, and declaring an emergency. And this is the one where we're asking to do just a first reading tonight because council has some, I guess, some council has the...
No, they all have, they don't have the backup.
Yeah, they need the backup, so, so you have a chance to review, and then next meeting, ask for emergency.
Does it not just make sense to leak the whole thing then? Why do, I mean, we only have half the information now, right? Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
Well, you have the legal part of it, the other part is just what backs up the legal side. This is all the, this is all we need to pass it. I have backup just to help you understand what went into this.
But that's what we just got, yeah, so we might have just had a...
Right, so this would just be a first reading, giving you a chance to review the materials, look at the backups, ask any questions you may have of the finance director.
Yeah, I'm definitely not voting on this tonight, so...
So, yeah, it'll be just a first reading.
I just don't know if, do we read it even? I just don't know if, do we read it even? Is it her?
Well, I mean, look, it takes me to a bigger question. As to how we can possibly get all legislation with minor exceptions before the day of the meeting.
Yeah, and this would have been done, but Annette actually sent me a text on Friday saying, "I don't have internet service. I'm sitting in my office that has no heat, no electric."
I understand.
So, yeah, it's just, yeah.
I don't know what the answer is, but I'm very uncomfortable, and I got a bad feeling only into my third meeting, that there's too much being thrown at us. We're being asked, you know, we take the oath to represent our residents to the best of our ability. Me personally, I'm not going to speak for my colleagues. I can't do it when I get legislation at 3:00 PM on the day of the meeting. I understand there's exceptions, but that's, this is a bigger picture. I apologize for being wordy on the whole thing. But we've got to figure out a way. It's been three weeks since the last meeting. A lot of this stuff we know is going to come up. I'm just saying, is there a way that we can just be a little bit more efficient to where we, we don't have to scramble? The first time I saw all the legislation was when I walked in because I checked my email three times today, but I didn't check it after 3:00 PM when it came in. That's a personal issue for me. It's not good government for me. Beth, to answer your question, I have no problem with a reading, knowing that I still have two weeks to look at what we have tonight and what she's going to provide to us. That's my position.
Yeah, I, I'm okay with the reading. I'm just like, I'll echo some of what you're saying. We've said that a long way. We appreciate things like the insurance one. Not an issue, we've talked about this several times. No news to me on this one. But I'd like to see us get away from emergency language in every single ordinance. I know we put it on, sometimes we still read it three times. And you guys are real good at saying, "We don't really need this in emergency." But we do that so it doesn't have to wait thirty days. But law is law. So, it's read it three times, then wait thirty days. So, every single piece of legislation that we have has that language. And I just, I don't know what the answer is, but I'm a little uncomfortable when they're all like that all the time, too. So, in order to move tonight, I'm fine with a first reading, just me, you know, but I'm not prepared to vote on this one, for sure. Just getting the numbers.
Well, I was going to speak up before they did, but I totally agree. This was a problem in the past where we got these, you know, and like Mark, I looked at my email at 2:50. I, the time was 2:50 when I received these, but I was at work. And you just can't go through this stuff at the last second.
And you're right. It, it needs to be more time efficient. A lot of stuff, though, comes to us from like missy tolls that were, and it's like, we need this in a week. And sometimes we're playing catch up with what they ask. So, I, I know exactly what you're saying, and you're right, but.
And that's why there's exceptions, a hundred percent, even with the storm. Understood.
Yeah.
You know? So, nobody's, I mean, we're, we're sensitive to the time of the storm. But, but we all know, this isn't the first time we've had this, like, conversation. So, we're just revisiting it.
And I've just seen these, like, this is the first time I read out all authorities. I can't read them out. I mean, as we do a timeout for an hour, and you know, let's read them.
I really didn't expect that, but I guess I spent just a lot of time. And in December, my assistant's been off, so just, I have put a lot of time into this, so.
Yeah, nobody's questioning that, but you, you see our point, too.
I mean, I'm doing the best of my ability to get you what I can when I can.
Yeah, so no, we understand that, but you understand our point, too.
I understand.
That we've got to be able to review it, that's all.
And I didn't expect, I didn't expect a passage tonight at all. So, but I, I would like a reading, and we still have two more council meetings, which is four weeks.
Gentlemen, so let's do it.
And we definitely appreciate all the hard work on it, but like we're saying, you know, declaring an emergency, we definitely need a little bit more time. At least I do. Thank you.
Well, I think that takes it, even if it's on the third reading, then it.
Third reading, then it immediately goes into effect. Otherwise, you have thirty days until it goes into effect. After the third reading and approval.
You guys have a reading?
Yeah.
Jason?
Yep.
Cool. Mike?
Yeah.
Okay, let's, let's read.
Okay, they could re-read the ordinance 2022-03.
Ordinance number 2022-3. An ordinance to make permanent appropriations for the normal expenses and other expenditures of the city of St. Clairsville, state of Ohio, for the period January 1st, 2022, through December 31st, 2022, and declaring an emergency.
And that is the first reading on that ordinance. Hey, Elizabeth?
Okay, the third one is the 2022-4. And that's the ordinance to establish the ARC Federal Grant Fund number 2052. It's the revenue from the Appalachia Development Program to increase revenue and additional temporary appropriations for the normal expenses and other expenditures of the city of St. Clairsville, state of Ohio, for the period January 1st, 2022, through December 31st, 2022, and declaring an emergency. And that is so Annette can set up the appropriate, make the appropriations to set up the appropriate line items for that grant.
This is a grant that we have?
This was a grant that we've been awarded, yes. We applied for.
So, we simply need to have a lineup and put this grant into.
Yes.
Right, we have, yes, and we have, we have dispersments to make, which.
Didn't, I, I'm sorry.
We have dispersments to make out of here, so.
We have to pay the contractor.
Yes.
So, I, I'm just not hearing you. We have the first.
We have dispersments to make already, yes.
So, we have this money. We need to put it someplace.
Correct.
So, this is an administrative thing, and this needs to happen now because we need to make a payment. Is that what I'm hearing?
So, for we new people, what is this? I know what ARC is, but what am I, what am I voting?
This is the.
This is the East End project. We had $150,000 grant to connect to the county as our secondary source of water. We have, I think it was 155, or 150, yeah, 155,000 grant. $150,000 loan for the project.
When did we get this money? Refresh my memory. I mean, was it like.
Some of this is actually through the loan part of it.
We received a grant also, it says right here. Like, what month did we receive that funding in, right?
It's been a while.
Should we not just turn around immediately and give this out?
I'll have to look and see when, when it came in.
What the five million?
No.
No.
Okay.
This is the, the first grant money that we had.
It didn't matter to me because I think it's a question. But, I mean, yeah. So, we need to make a payment, right?
Yes.
All right. And we need to do this now to make that payment?
Because it was actually part of the billing last year, but we just got through the process with OWDA, I think it was, to, and the contractor to make this happen.
Should this have been in last year's net instead of this year's?
Um, no.
As far as.
Because it was paid out in the rough time, which is this year, right?
It was a pre-need last year.
As long as section four seemed like true.
Hmm, I don't think we got this until after, obviously after last year's budget was done. So, I don't think that's why. But I'm not sure.
So, what I hear you saying, though, is if we don't make this thing today, then somebody doesn't get paid.
Right.
Okay. So, again, I'll just say that, you know, as clear as we can make it, as much time as we can have it. But if I can borrow your thing. I'll move that the rules are correct.
We have three to get.
So.
Ordinance 2022-4. An ordinance to establish the ARC Federal Grant Fund number 2052. Revenue is from the Appalachia Development Program to increase revenue and make additional temporary appropriations for the normal expenses and other expenditures of the city of St. Clairsville, state of Ohio, for the period January 1st, 2022, through December 31st, 2022, and declaring an emergency.
Okay, does anybody want to take action to consider this emergency?
I move that the rules requiring ordinances for resolutions to be passed on three separate readings to be suspended declaring it a vacancy.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Who will take a vote on whether or not to consider this emergency legislation?
Butler?
Yes.
Opbridge?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Thrash?
Yes.
Cinso?
Yes.
Anybody who voted unanimously to consider this emergency will now read it and take a vote on the ordinance itself.
I have one more thing to say, I guess. This is actually, it's, it's like a drawdown program. So, we, we've only, I think it was forty some thousand dollars that was drawn down on a payment that we have to pay that back. But throughout the year, this will be the full grant that we get. So, the ARC people make a payment, and then.
But they have to submit, the contractor has to submit a payment application before we can draw it.
Right, and then we receive the money from ARC, which we did, we just got partial of this in January. So, we take that out and make a payment again. But for the full funding, it'll be $155,000.
That's why it wasn't in last year's.
Right, because we got this, just got the money in January.
So, we've already made the pay, the payment?
No.
No, we have to appropriate the money so I can make the payment.
Yes, yes.
To the contractor.
So, are we taking the drawdown from the grant or the loan?
Both.
Yes.
Is it, is it?
So, we're.
Want to make that payment to whatever contractor it is. When did he submit the payment?
He submitted in November, but there was a lot of paperwork, and they were delayed on, the construction company was delayed on their part to the OWDA, so.
Well, that, that was the concrete vault. They couldn't move forward until the vault came in. They laid all the pipe, and then they submitted the payment application and had to go through the online process of setting themselves up as a vendor from the state, which I know you guys have dealt with the state before, it's not easy. So, that, that's why that's taken so long. But now that the vault's in, it should move a little bit faster.
That's understood.
And back in October, in your second meeting in October, is when you authorized the mayor to submit the grant application.
Right, I remember the grant, I remember this other five million, but I think, again, I think they're fair questions to say like, yes, when did we get the money? And emergency again, so we're just trying to do our due diligence, council.
Right.
So, no questioning anybody's, you know, intentions here, but just trying to understand clearly, so, you know.
And we just got the, the portion of, in January, that has to be paid out, so. But that's not the full, full part that will have to be dispersed throughout the year.
Yeah, and like, when council says, like, somebody comes and they just call us and say, "Hey, there's a grant opportunity, but you've got to get in Friday." Like, we all get that. Nobody's going to ever pass, well, nobody currently on council is ever going to pass on the opportunity to apply for it, right? So, those kind of things make good sense. Okay, so, we can fetch this?
Okay, we've already voted to consider this emergency legislation. Let's now vote on the ordinance itself. It'll be read.
Ordinance 2022-4. An ordinance to establish the ARC Federal Grant Fund number 2052. Revenue is from the Appalachia Development Program to increase revenue and make additional temporary appropriations for the normal expenses and other expenditures of the city of St. Clairsville, state of Ohio, for the period January 1st, 2022, through December 31st, 2022, and declaring an emergency.
And we need at this time a motion to pass the ordinance as it is.
So moved.
Mr. Thomas, Ms. Opbridge. Will now take a vote on passing ordinance 2022-04.
Butler?
Yes.
Opbridge?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Thrash?
Yes.
Cinso?
Yes.
Okay, six and three unanimous. Ordinance 2022-04 is passed as emergency legislation.
The next one up is 2022-05. And that's the resolution authoring Mayor Catherine Tolman to apply for accept and enter into a cooperative agreement for the construction of the Interstate 70 underpass Water Main Project between the city of St. Clairsville and the Ohio Water Development Authority and declaring an emergency. And this is the language that OWDA is requesting to get the loan program started. And that just came in.
And that has to be done tonight?
That is my understanding. We can't move forward, yeah.
If we have funding. I mean, we have, we have enough cash, but from the discussions with the EPA and RCAP and our engineer, they are highly recommending that we keep our cash in case we have some other incident that pops up and that we need to go with this. But the EPA has reached out to me since we've put the water on, the temporary water line in, at least five times to make sure that we're still moving forward with it, so.
Well, and ODOT is going to tell us when they're going to close the road.
No, we're closing the road as part of the project.
Well, that's what I'm saying, but, you know, when it's done, and when we say, so, yeah, we, we're going to move with this as soon as we can. So, that one is pretty, pretty imminent.
What's this five million, that one loan we're doing?
That's for the distribution system.
That has nothing to do with us.
Nope. We submitted this project as part of that House Bill 168. We submitted three projects. One was Bellevue, one was this interstate project, and one was the distribution system. And we had it for phase one, and then they were allowing us to submit up to five million, five million dollars. So, we made it phase one and phase two. When the EPA called and said they wanted to fund the project, I assumed it was obviously going to be this one, PI 70 project, because it was the cheapest, at 800,000. They informed me, no, that they were willing to give us the five million. So, we, we have a lot of stuff going on.
Any questions?
Yeah, okay. We're getting a loan, I understand that. What are the terms of the loan?
Same terms.
Number one, number two.
Same terms as the, the last, the East End Connection project. I think it was 1% or 2% interest. I'll have to look and see.
Is the cooperative agreement the loan? Does any?
I don't remember. I think so.
I mean, I, I don't know what, and then there's Exhibit A.
Right.
Section one, that's not attached. Okay, I have an issue again with that. What's Exhibit A?
That is probably.
I mean, is it the agreement itself?
That would be the agreement itself.
Yes.
Which I did not have, so that's why it's not part of your.
That's why it's not attached.
Okay.
Which we don't have yet. Why, why do we have it like that? We don't have the agreement yet because we need authorization to go after.
After the agreement, yes.
I mean, I'd like to know the terms. How, how are we repaying it? What does the agreement say? I'd like to see the agreement. It should be attached to the ordinance. We should have it ahead of time so we can make, you know, a good rational decision. We don't have it. And I mean, no disrespect. I, I, I just, I'm not comfortable with this at all.
I have a comment. Is this something, is this something that we can get Exhibit A and possibly have a special meeting later in the week? I mean, I don't think legally, can we even pass this without having Exhibit A?
No, I don't think so. I'm about to sit there. I didn't even see that.
That's a question for, also, not the nitpick, but construction. I'm surprised Ward checked it and picked up. Third line.
That, that was just typing on the agenda. It's not in the actual legislation.
Should we table this until we get?
Would we?
We can, we can table it.
I think without Exhibit A. I think, you know, we're always at their concerns, but, I mean, looking at this now and seeing Exhibit A, not seeing Exhibit A, I mean, I certainly. looking at this now and seeing Exhibit A, not seeing Exhibit A, I mean, I certainly...
Yeah, normally, exhibit, the exhibits are attached after the legislation is sent back over. But with the, yeah, with the rush today of trying to get everything ready for the meeting.
Who has the agreement?
That would be in Jeremy's office.
Uh, that I actually would think would be with RCAP. I have the agreement for the East End Connection. I don't have the agreement for this one. That's okay.
I, I, I will tell you right now, I'm not, I will abstain on anything because I cannot make a conscious, good conscious decision.
Anyone wish to make a motion to table?
I didn't even see that in there.
Would, do we need a resolution to table or just do it?
I, I don't, we don't need a motion. I, I don't think. We just don't introduce it.
Yeah, just don't introduce it.
Vince, go ahead.
No, I was gonna say, if it needs passed, if we can have an opportunity to look at it, maybe Thursday, call a special meeting.
I'm fine with a special meeting.
Take ten minutes or, I mean, I want to speak for everybody.
I can't be here Thursday.
Keep in mind, once we get the agreement, we have to give the public 48 hours.
Right, right.
That's why.
Maybe Thursday or...
I can't be here Thursday or not.
Okay, it's okay. I mean, even if it ends up being the next meeting, I, I apologize. I didn't even see that was in there.
Oh, no, I'm just, I'm, I'm okay. I'm just out of town for a week, but...
Okay.
You only need five.
Since we're gonna table this, we'll move on, or...
Jeremy, I think we ought to table the, the second one, 06, because it goes in conjunction with 05, since it's the same project.
It's the same project, but it's the part that needs to be, but yeah, that, that's fine, too.
Well, just, since we're doing this, though, what's the, what's five is, we need to see if it's A, attachment A.
Right. And...
And that's the language. What's six then?
Six was actually the...
That's the one to, to allow us to, to declare an emergency and work with the contractor instead of bidding the project out because of the EPA mandate.
Because the emergency at the time with the water leak underneath the interstate, setting up the water, temporary water line, getting the specific...
We didn't need legislation because we were paying out of pocket for, for that project. Now that we're going for a loan, they want legislation that declares an emergency, allowing us to work with the contractor. So she's right. They're, they're kind of tied together, so.
In that case, we should actually not introduce any one of those.
Right.
So 2022-06 will also not be introduced this evening. The last one on the agenda is Resolution 2022-07.
And that is your resolution moving your time of your meetings from 7:30 to 7:00.
A question. Should that not have in there March 1st, 2022, just for historical purposes? I mean, we, it doesn't really say when we're doing it.
No, it doesn't, because we were doing three readings, so I wasn't...
Oh, okay, because we discussed...
Yeah, it had gone, we had gone between making it March 1st, going back and forth, and...
So is it council's intent, we'll have three readings and then start this in April or something?
It's my intent to not be an emergency and my intent to let the public react to this, so he gets three meetings.
That's, I'm perfectly fine with that.
That's mine.
But at some point, I, I guess, I'm just thinking down the road, if someone looks at this, they're gonna say, well, when did they change it? What, what was the date?
The date that we changed, I mean, the effective date will be...
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be, the date would be when it was signed.
Right.
Yeah.
We also, no, my question is, my comment is, what will be the first meeting that this will be?
It'll be the next meeting after it was signed.
Right.
Thirty days.
Yes, because it has to be thirty days, so.
Okay, I understand.
So if I, like, if we signed it tonight, it would be thirty days from tonight, so that's why.
So whatever that first meeting after the thirty, I guess, so what I'm saying is, I understand that. What I'm saying, there's a finite date, though. You can calculate it out. And, and my question was, should that date be in there? I, I don't know.
I would like it to be.
I mean, I just, someone's gonna look at it in a year or two years. They're gonna say, well, when did it change?
Well, how can you put a date there if you guys said, no, if you're gonna pass it? You know what I'm saying? If you said, oh, I want to pass it, I want to take it.
Then it's... Three meetings, thirty.
So I, but I think we have chatted about this. We're all comfortable with this. I think we have a projection. So today's the seventh, one, two...
Yeah, I, I don't, this resolution wouldn't have been on the table, but for council, you know, talking here, we wanted to do it, so.
It's affected May 1st, 2022.
That's when it would be?
I think if I did catch it, so three meetings plus the, I did it wrong, I'm sure, but somebody else...
Right, yeah, I mean, we just have our general language that we always put in, that it takes effect in the earliest period allowed by the charter. But I mean, we...
That's fine.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm, I'm completely fine with putting the date in, but I'm completely fine with not putting the date because it's gonna...
Well, what if four councilmen can't be here and I do go postpone a meeting, you know? Not putting it in, yeah, gives you the out if something happens that you can't, for whatever reason, pass it.
Yeah, so we'll have to change it.
Yeah, we have to change it.
Well, it'll go in the minutes.
You're right.
The night that we pass it, we'll say, okay, it's back to thirty days. That means whatever that date is. Okay. Thank you.
And that is everything.
I think we also need one thing to consider, since we are advancing the time of the council meeting from 7:30 to 7:00, we need to consider also what we're doing with our utility and finance committee meetings because they were taking place, they started out at 6:30 or, or 6:45 because we had a half hour or forty-five minutes or an hour based on those. But now, if we go seven o'clock, the utility meeting and the finance meeting are now fifteen minutes before what the council meeting is. So that will have to be backed up to six, to 6:30. That'll allow time to not run into each other and also to publicize the time that the public is aware that those committee meetings will be held because they are also open to the public. So they need to be...
They need to be memorialized somehow in writing at some point.
Yeah, I think they're, they're gonna have to move to like 6:15.
Yeah.
For seven o'clock meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
And then...
So we're just gonna go with the first reading on this tonight, and that would be the end of it.
Promise. I gotta go. I just, I have one other thing.
Sure, good. Well, we're gonna, do you want to do that before we have the first reading on this change?
We haven't had the reading yet?
No.
My God, Jacob, what are you even doing?
She hasn't been talking.
Okay, Resolution 2022-07 for the first reading.
Resolution number 2022-7, a resolution moving the time of all regular council meetings from 7:30 PM to 7:00 AM.
That is the first reading. That concludes business on the agenda. Beth, do you have something there?
Just as we're talking about these meetings moving, and we're talking about moving, many meetings, I think something that we need to consider, and I'm not sure the procedure, so I just wanted to bring it up to all my colleagues here, is we need to have minutes. These, these, these committee meetings are public meetings, and there should be like minutes, like real minutes taken.
Yeah.
So I say, I'd like us to consider, you know, if we could talk Jacob, if we could compensate Jacob for, hire him to actually take the minutes at these meetings, like, work with him, come up with a contract and have him, you know, come to the utility meeting, take minutes, come to the police committee, take minutes, come to the finance committee, take minutes. So I just want us to think about that. I don't know how we do that. Do we get a contract with him? Because right now, we're compensating him as our, we hire him as our clerk.
Right. And I've never seen if you have a contract with Jacob or not.
I don't want that to be that bad.
There's no contract. It's probably, you have, you have an ordinance, and you need to approve me in before the council meetings as council clerk.
Yeah.
There's never been a contract for the clerk of council in the years I was in.
Right.
Okay, I don't care how we do it.
And well, to my knowledge, there's never been official minutes taken of any committee meeting. If the chairperson kept minutes, so you might have a good set of minutes from one person. Somebody else might not take any, you might have any minutes, so.
Should be minutes.
I, I started attempting to take minutes, and I haven't, and then you're supposed to vote on it because the auditors had brought that up in the past.
Years and years and years ago, there were committee, committee meeting minutes.
It took them.
Thirty years, I don't remember.
Probably usually the committee chair, but there's so much.
But, but, but Councilman Smith raises a valid question. If for no other reason, the auditors.
So is that something you guys all?
Yes.
Yeah, everybody be okay with Jacob if we talk to him and figure out how we could do that?
Yep.
J.C., no?
No, you're good.
J.C. wants to go home.
So is Jeremy. Let's get him out of here.
No, you're, you're fine.
Okay, so can, can, are, yes, work with Jim, talk about this? Okay, beautiful. J.C., go.
That's, I wasn't trying to be mean. I had nothing to do with it.
What?
I wasn't trying to be aggressive or anything. I, that...
No, 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 I'm good. Listen, I'm calm. Did you have something else?
Yeah, I just wanted to know, we're setting up a special meeting for a six and, or five and six ordinance. Are we gonna have a special meeting? Let me find the information first.
We have to find these things first and make sure that...
Because it'll have to be advertised.
Because, again, it has to be advertised forty-eight hours ahead of the meeting to let the public...
And those will be emailed to us, the...
As soon as I find out why that lists Attachment A, because this should have just been, I thought it was just to allow us to go after it, not to attach it. So I'll have to find out.
All right.
Well, let's wrap up. He's gotta go to bed. He's been something too strict.
Oh, yeah, I know, I know no one's in a hurry to leave this evening, but would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
We have a second.
All of a sudden.
Please adjourn.